Evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of St. Peter, Minnesota. It is Monday, October 27th, 2025. At 7:00 PM, we are called to order. Would all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone should have received a copy of tonight's packet. Are there any revisions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. The minutes of our last meeting appear on pages five through seven of the packet. Are there any revisions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We have time on our agenda for visitors. Members of the audience wishing to address the council on an agenda item later in the meeting can do so at this time. Hearing no visitors, we also have time for general visitor comments if anybody would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda appears on pages eight through 28 of the packet and concludes with a resolution that appears on page 29 of the packet. The consent agenda includes the following licenses, a tree worker license to Trinity Tree Service for the dates that are printed in the packet, a temporary liquor license to Nicollet Lodge Number 54 at the location and dates printed in the packet, the SPCC Room 215 through 217 renovation project proposal is awarded in the amount of $93,637 to web construction, parking on Valley View Road will be modified to allow overnight parking on the south and west side of the roadway, the following employee appointments, Michael Rath, Sam Barnik, and Grace Tim for the positions and wages listed within the packet, as well as the schedule of disbursements for October 9th through 23rd, 2025. Is there any discussion of any item that's on the consent agenda? Hearing no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. We have no items of unfinished business tonight, so we will move on to our first item of new business, which is the Community Center Transfer Switch Bid Acceptance, and John is here to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a discussion that we've had at a few workshops throughout this year to upgrade the infrastructure and the transfer switch system for the community center, as well as back in July, the council did approve that we could go out for bids for this project. I am excited to say that the bid ultimately did come back less than we anticipated in our budgeted amount. We did only have one bid from Laketown Electric. They were able to join us for a pre-bid walkthrough where we walked through with Eric Borsuth and myself, as well as our contracted representative from ISG to make sure that the scope of the project was outlined. The bid came back originally just under $200,000, but as we reviewed it, there were some things that were missing. We did continue to work with that contractor to address those, and we were still able to come in under our budgeted amount of $250,000 with an amount of $230,540. And so after working with ISG to review the specs of the proposed updated bid, as well as the staff recommendation, I am hoping that council will approve the resolution on, I believe it is page 32, to approve this bid and award it to Laketown Electric.
John, anything to add, Todd, before we get to questions? Questions? Ben?
Are there any contingencies on this project? Anything rolled into there just in case we're not at 230, or is there something already built into the project in case, like a 5% buffer, 10% buffer?
Not specifically...
Or this is their bid? 230,540 with no contingency.
That is with no contingencies, however, being underneath the $250,000 that we had budgeted, we are comfortable, again, doing multiple walkthroughs with this contractor. We do believe this is where it is, and they have been working with their subcontractors to make sure that these are the amounts that they are planning to proceed with. So we feel very comfortable with this and that we would stay within the budget if there were change orders.
Additional questions? All right, hearing nothing further, the resolution awarding the bid for the St. Peter Community Center Electrical Infrastructure and Transfer Switch Replacement appears on page 32 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Thanks, John. Next item of new business, St. Peter Food Co-op Revolving Loan, and Ben is here to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mayor Noel and members of the council. The Food Co-op is looking to, is requesting to extend their loan, their balloon payment. The Food Co-op was originally opened in 1979. It was on the corner of Front and Broadway Street, a small little building next to a couple of the other that eventually got hit by the tornado and then they were demolished. They moved across Broadway over to the Jake's Pizza, kind of doubling their size. Spent many years there and did well, and so then in would be 2010, they decided to double in size again and moved to the old Chevrolet dealership property. So with that, they, in 2010 and 2011, they asked for a loan of $350,000, and that was to partially finance the renovation and furnishings of that new building and that property. So with that, it was a 20-year amortization, and the EDA council reviewed that 10 years later, so five years ago, and they extended that with another review in five years, which is due on December of this year. So they came forward before the EDA here a couple days ago and asked to extend that loan balloon, otherwise they would have to pay the entire amount off. The EDA Loan Review Committee and the EDA both recommended approval, but just one note on page 34 at the top, the interest rate was increased a little bit to 5.25. So the policy that was adopted over the last year was, if it's backed by real estate, you get 2% less than prime. So prime's at 7.25 right now, and it's secured by real estate, so they're at 5.25. One thing that does is that provides a little bit of interest into our revolving loan fund to fund things like the ADA program and other things that the council does, so it's kind of a win-win. So even though they had 3%, it's now 5.25%, and they were okay with that. So with that, it would be staff's and the EDA's recommendation to approve this extension.
Thanks, Ben. Any discussion? Brad?
I'd like to... I had some feedback from the EDA meeting. There was no question about this getting approved. Everything was fine with it, and it was unanimous vote on the EDA to pass it, so.
Thanks. Any other discussion? Darryl?
If this is done in five years, this loan wouldn't be paid off then, correct?
Correct. It will be done. And hopefully they come to us in the next five years with an expansion or something fun.
Double their size again.
Thank you.
Carrie?
I was at the EDA meeting as a liaison. I abstained, and I'm going to abstain tonight because I'm on the leadership team. I know I don't legally need to, but I think it's a good idea.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing nothing further, the resolution approving a five-year balloon payment extension for the St. Peter Food Co-op Revolving Loan appears on pages 35 through 36 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Abstain.
The resolution carries. Thanks, Ben. Next up, MMUA Safety Contract for Noel. Wow, we're getting to see all everybody tonight.
I'll stay for a while.
All right. Get comfortable.
Pete could be with you.
Yeah. Good evening, Pete.
Madam Mayor and City Council, for the last 25 years, we've come before you to ask you to authorize a safety contract with the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. They are the association. It comes to our community and helps us train our employees how to operate safely and how to perform their jobs in a safe and efficient manner. We require a Level 1 of service based on our population of 12,000-plus. We're also a Tier 2, which requires two days of training per month. One day is given an open session, the other is watching our crews operate and then critiquing how we do things. As I'd mentioned, we have been doing this for 25-plus years, and we have seen outstanding safety numbers and a decrease in workplace injuries. And so with that, I'm asking you to approve the resolution on page 43, and I would be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Pete? This has come up every year, so we've had plenty of time to discuss this, but anything that can reduce injuries is a great thing for our staff and for our city. Hearing no further discussion, the resolution authorizing renewal of safety contract with MMUA is on page 43 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Moving on to standard detail plates.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you, you have a variety of standard detail plates. These are used in the construction of a lot of the city infrastructure, and over the course of the last year or two, we've had some minor changes in relation to how we construct some of this materials. You have before you standard plate 1003, which is a concrete walk typical section. As you may be aware, we removed the tool joints and went to a saw cut, so we took feedback from some of the people that use our sidewalks who are in wheelchairs and said that these joints do not provide for a very comfortable ride, and so as you will see in that standard detail, along with some of the others along here, that is the main change that we have provided, that now we're requesting that all concrete be poured and then saw cut instead of tool joints. And so that's the same with 7024R, 7030R, and 7032C. All of those relate to concrete aprons and walk. The other two are new. One is a 16-foot aluminum pole streetlight, which our electric superintendent is requesting. That is standard detail 2009, and they are all attached here in pages 50 through 55. And then 730R, which is the rollover, that's the concrete apron with rollover-style curb and gutter. That is a newer standard detail that we tried at our subdivision out at Cullen Street. And so we wanted to make that approval. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily use that at every subdivision, but when we do use it, we will use that standard detail. The details are all on pages 50 through 55, and a resolution is on pages 56 through 57.
All right. Any questions for Pete or any discussion on any of these? Well, I'm glad that we're hearing feedback from residents and making something...
Anything else you guys want me to go through today?
I actually really liked what they've done in that neighborhood and watching the rain and everything else.
It's working well. All right.
Could you provide your name and address? John, no.
If there's no further discussion, the resolution adopting the modifications and additional city utility, wait, yes, city utility standard detail plates is on pages 56 through 57 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Moving on to standard detail plates.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you, you have a variety of standard detail plates. These are used in the construction of a lot of the city infrastructure, and over the course of the last year or two, we've had some minor changes in relation to how we construct some of this materials. You have before you standard plate 1003, which is a concrete walk typical section. As you may be aware, we removed the tool joints and went to a saw cut, so we took feedback from some of the people that use our sidewalks who are in wheelchairs and said that these joints do not provide for a very comfortable ride, and so as you will see in that standard detail, along with some of the others along here, that is the main change that we have provided, that now we're requesting that all concrete be poured and then saw cut instead of tool joints. And so that's the same with 7024R, 7030R, and 7032C. All of those relate to concrete aprons and walk. The other two are new. One is a 16-foot aluminum pole streetlight, which our electric superintendent is requesting. That is standard detail 2009, and they are all attached here in pages 50 through 55. And then 730R, which is the rollover, that's the concrete apron with rollover-style curb and gutter. That is a newer standard detail that we tried at our subdivision out at Cullen Street. And so we wanted to make that approval. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily use that at every subdivision, but when we do use it, we will use that standard detail. The details are all on pages 50 through 55, and a resolution is on pages 56 through 57.
All right. Any questions for Pete or any discussion on any of these? Well, I'm glad that we're hearing feedback from residents and making something...
Anything else you guys want me to go through today?
I actually really liked what they've done in that neighborhood and watching the rain and everything else.
It's working well. All right.
Could you provide your name and address? John, no.
If there's no further discussion, the resolution adopting the modifications and additional city utility, wait, yes, city utility standard detail plates is on pages 56 through 57 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Thanks, Pete. Next up, TIF 1-26 Timeline Amendment.
Remember, usually Shannon is here to discuss these with you, but this is a relatively small modification to a previously entered into tax and current financing agreement. So this is for our friends at St. Peter Investors LLC. These are the folks who developed the Two Traverse Green Apartments, and as you know, traded some land and purchased some land from you at Cullen Street. Your original document, the original TIF document, indicated very clearly that construction had to occur in the 2025 year. This only moves it to the 2026 year. I've had communication with their title company and a number of different folks, and so we're very confident that they're going to continue moving forward, but it does need to represent this appropriately so that the TIF district starts at the appropriate time. So that's really the basis for the change here and the only basis for that change. There's a resolution included in your packet, and of course, the modification has been drafted by TAFT, your bond and development agreement council. Mary Epple and her team do that work for you. And so the resolution is included in your packet. Pardon me, I gotta flip the pages here quick. To get there, it is on page 85. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, the resolution authorizing execution of an amended development agreement is on page 85. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Thanks, Pete. Next up, TIF 1-26 Timeline Amendment.
Remember, usually Shannon is here to discuss these with you, but this is a relatively small modification to a previously entered into tax and current financing agreement. So this is for our friends at St. Peter Investors LLC. These are the folks who developed the Two Traverse Green Apartments, and as you know, traded some land and purchased some land from you at Cullen Street. Your original document, the original TIF document, indicated very clearly that construction had to occur in the 2025 year. This only moves it to the 2026 year. I've had communication with their title company and a number of different folks, and so we're very confident that they're going to continue moving forward, but it does need to represent this appropriately so that the TIF district starts at the appropriate time. So that's really the basis for the change here and the only basis for that change. There's a resolution included in your packet, and of course, the modification has been drafted by TAFT, your bond and development agreement council. Mary Epple and her team do that work for you. And so the resolution is included in your packet. Pardon me, I gotta flip the pages here quick. To get there, it is on page 85. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, the resolution authorizing execution of an amended development agreement is on page 85. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Moving on to standard detail plates.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you, you have a variety of standard detail plates. These are used in the construction of a lot of the city infrastructure, and over the course of the last year or two, we've had some minor changes in relation to how we construct some of this materials. You have before you standard plate 1003, which is a concrete walk typical section. As you may be aware, we removed the tool joints and went to a saw cut, so we took feedback from some of the people that use our sidewalks who are in wheelchairs and said that these joints do not provide for a very comfortable ride, and so as you will see in that standard detail, along with some of the others along here, that is the main change that we have provided, that now we're requesting that all concrete be poured and then saw cut instead of tool joints. And so that's the same with 7024R, 7030R, and 7032C. All of those relate to concrete aprons and walk. The other two are new. One is a 16-foot aluminum pole streetlight, which our electric superintendent is requesting. That is standard detail 2009, and they are all attached here in pages 50 through 55. And then 730R, which is the rollover, that's the concrete apron with rollover-style curb and gutter. That is a newer standard detail that we tried at our subdivision out at Cullen Street. And so we wanted to make that approval. Doesn't mean that we'll necessarily use that at every subdivision, but when we do use it, we will use that standard detail. The details are all on pages 50 through 55, and a resolution is on pages 56 through 57.
All right. Any questions for Pete or any discussion on any of these? Well, I'm glad that we're hearing feedback from residents and making something...
Anything else you guys want me to go through today?
I actually really liked what they've done in that neighborhood and watching the rain and everything else.
It's working well. All right.
Could you provide your name and address? John, no.
If there's no further discussion, the resolution adopting the modifications and additional city utility, wait, yes, city utility standard detail plates is on pages 56 through 57 of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Thanks, Pete. Next up, TIF 1-26 Timeline Amendment.
Remember, usually Shannon is here to discuss these with you, but this is a relatively small modification to a previously entered into tax and current financing agreement. So this is for our friends at St. Peter Investors LLC. These are the folks who developed the Two Traverse Green Apartments, and as you know, traded some land and purchased some land from you at Cullen Street. Your original document, the original TIF document, indicated very clearly that construction had to occur in the 2025 year. This only moves it to the 2026 year. I've had communication with their title company and a number of different folks, and so we're very confident that they're going to continue moving forward, but it does need to represent this appropriately so that the TIF district starts at the appropriate time. So that's really the basis for the change here and the only basis for that change. There's a resolution included in your packet, and of course, the modification has been drafted by TAFT, your bond and development agreement council. Mary Epple and her team do that work for you. And so the resolution is included in your packet. Pardon me, I gotta flip the pages here quick. To get there, it is on page 85. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, the resolution authorizing execution of an amended development agreement is on page 85. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion and a second call. The roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rand?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. Moving on to reports. I have no report this evening. Are there any council members who'd like to make a report at this time? Brad?
So two things about power related. About a week and a half ago, I had the opportunity to attend the annual meeting for the Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, otherwise known as SIMPA. That's who St. Peter and 16 other communities get their power for, for municipal electric companies. Overall, a positive meeting. We shouldn't be seeing upward pressure on rates, at least for the next year. It was interesting compared to last year when they were looking at various renewable projects and other carbon-free projects, and the planning for that. This year, it's a little bit, this year, there is a lot of trying to figure out what they're going to do going forward because there are changes at the federal level to take away those credits. Yet in Minnesota, we still have our carbon-free standards of 90% by 2035 and 100% by 2040. So in that way, there's a lot of uncertainty as far as how to address capital projects going forward. Do they keep going at the same pace? Do they dial back a little bit to see if there's another change at the federal level to bring back some of these credits? So overall, overall positive, but you know, a little more uncertainty compared to what there was last year as far as capital investments going forward. The other thing to report, city of St. Peter, and sorry if I'm going to steal any of Pete's thunder here, we applied for a grant from the state of Minnesota for, it's called Solar for Cities, where it's a grant that would pay 70% of the cost of a solar array for either a city, a school district, a county. And actually, while we were at our SIMPA meeting, Pete got the email that notified him that we did actually receive a grant for it. So the 40-kilowatt array that we're planning on building at the city hall, 70% of it will be paid for by the state. The other 30%, because the federal tax credit is still valid this year, will be paid by the federal tax credit. So in essence, we're getting essentially a 40-kilowatt array, which is about seven houses for free. So that's something to be really excited about as we move towards our clean energy future, so. This relates to a property located at, and we'll fix that resolution, but the property is 1305 Old Minnesota Avenue. I know it says 107, but this is for 1305 Minnesota Avenue, and I do not expect to come back into open session to vote on anything other than to adjourn. So we are likely only to come back to adjourn.
So we will move downstairs and?
Yep.
We'll just close the meeting.
That's correct.
The conclusion of the executive session.
That's correct.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution that appears on page 86 of the packet?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pettis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rampt?
Aye.
Councilmember Charstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember DeVos?
Aye.
Mayor Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
The resolution is approved, and we will close our open session at 7:34.